February 20, 2024, St. Clair Shores City Council Meeting to order. Abby, please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubello?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
And Councilmember Burgess has asked to be excused.
Moved to excuse.
Support. Moved by Councilman Karen, supported by Councilman Frederick to excuse Councilwoman Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations and presentations. Item three is audience participation. Two-minute time, Lynda, regarding items on the agenda. Do we have any? Abby.
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker tonight. His name is Rick Zaremski, St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on item number five.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rick Zaremski. I'm a resident of St. Clair Shores. I have two issues tonight. First one is, it is my understanding the condo developer at 24101 Jefferson is requesting an extension on their site plan approval. The reason being Eagle and the state have not yet approved the remediation work that was done on the property in October of 2023. When I was researching the agenda paperwork from the city council meeting on March 20, 1923, page 179 and 181 stated, "On January 31, 2012, a letter from the environmental contractor was sent to the CDI director of St. Clair Shores." The letter concluded that there were five underground tanks at the property on 24101 Jefferson from a former gas station. Two tanks were removed in 1986. No record exists of the three remaining tanks ever being removed. It has been 12 years since this report. Was Superfund money available back in 2012? Why wasn't it used to clean up this property back then? The reason the property at 24101 Jefferson was never redeveloped is because it was contaminated all these years. And my second issue is, the agenda item today states that the condo development is four stories with a rooftop deck. The previous planning commission and city council meetings have stated the condo was a five-story building with a rooftop clubhouse. Has something changed in the plan? A rooftop clubhouse will increase the height of the building. That is why this should be considered a five-story building, not a four-story building. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only one. Item four is to request to approve the fiscal year '24 budget amendments. Good evening, Renee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening again. Bringing before you some budget amendments for the general fund, for the ARPA fund, and for the golf fund. As you can see from what I had sent out, for the general fund, we have a couple items for the revenue, to increase the revenue, partially from the TIFA. There's a $10,000 transfer in from TIFA that hadn't been budgeted for, and also an Eagle grant that we hadn't budgeted for of $80,000. It's a high-water infrastructure grant. So those two items need to be taken care of. Also, in the general fund, there are a few different items that are just mostly housekeeping items that don't affect the fund balance or an offset to each other, and you could see those easily. But the main areas that will affect the fund balance would be the arena, the boating, and the pool. For the arena, there were some repairs needed on the chiller, the heat exchanger, and then a walk behind scrubber was purchased. So these total $222,600 when this is all done. For the boating department, this is mostly just wages and fringes that are needed. Some additional manpower was needed at the Blossom Heath Pier. This is being mostly offset by the transfer in from TIFA of $35,000 in total. That was originally only budgeted for 25. That's why we needed the extra 10 for that. The pump house replacement had not been budgeted for. That total project is $1.727 million when that'll be all done. So in total, all of these amendments would affect the fund balance for the general fund by a reduction of over $2.2 million, as presented. There is plenty of fund balance available for this. For the ARPA fund, these budget amendments are needed to move the grant funds from the unearned to the earned revenue for the grant, and also to budget the spent and the encumbered expenditures that we have for the ARPA grant. This will correct all of those different things that need to be done, along with an increase of $200,000 in interest revenue that's coming in, which will increase that fund balance by 200,000. The last item is the golf fund, which I had brought before you a deficit elimination plan in January. It was go to the state. I did send that into the state and they approved it. Part of that plan was to move $218,520 from the general fund into the golf fund to bring that out of a deficit. And so this will take care of that whole thing. That's basically a quick rundown of everything that we're asking for at this time. If you have any questions?
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. First off, the state grant for the Eagle High Water Grant, that was the master planning one. So that kind of offsets the
Master plan, yes. Correct.
Increase in the planning. So that wasn't clear by, it was like, oh, we did approve that back, I think, in August 2023. So, okay.
Yep, that's what that is.
So that kind of offsets the increase for the planning services for the master plan. Question about the ARPA wages, the $13360 for the ARPA project administrator. What time period does that reflect? I know it's 10 grand a month.
It's reflecting the whole fiscal year, but there was a little bit of a runover from the last fiscal year where one of the invoices got brought into this year in error. It should have really been in the last fiscal year, but it wasn't. So it's a little bit higher than what's normal. But it does reflect the whole year for the wages and the fringe benefits, which would be the FICA.
So it's some part of the year that's already been completed and some that's forecasted?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
Mr. Rubello.
The only question I hadn't yet answered, the 218520 was from the deficit
Yes.
Elimination that we spoke of. I don't know if, I think it might have been last meeting. But
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Vitale.
On a positive note, the $200,000 in interest on the ARPA money, is this one of the funds where we've got the day-to-day, we amended our fiscal policy to have the day-to-day interest?
That, a lot of that money is in, like, treasury bills, so that they're triple-rate, AAA-rated, so it's guaranteed money, and you can put them in for a term. So it kind of staggered the terms, not knowing exactly when we would need the money. And so it's earning a decent return, and it's guaranteed, so we're not at risk of losing anything.
Well, that interest will help pay for something.
But that is the answer, yes. That is, they're helping us do the investing.
Okay.
It's been, obviously, good returns.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion be in order. Move to approve? Support. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rubello, to approve 2404 budget amendment. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is a request to extend the site plan approval for 24101 Jefferson. Mr. Lint?
On the city's, on the city council on August 21, 2023, the council's motion included the following conditions related to the known or suspected environmental contamination on the site located at 24101 Jefferson. The motion obtained was a proper certification, the clearance reports from the state of Michigan, and to submit to the city within six months of final approval, regardless of whether the development occurs and the brownfield plan must be approved or closure report submitted to the city prior to the dismissal of construction documents. As of today, the environmental remediation of the site occurred, and according to the environmental consultant, more than 1,100 tons of soil was removed and transported to a landfill for hazardous material. A closure report was completed based on the remediation activities and findings submitted to Eagle on January 29, 2024. A confirmation letter dated on February 6, 2024, was sent to the developer, noting that Eagle has 90 days to audit the report. The letter is attached to the agenda file. Additionally, the project engineer and the city staff met on January 9 to discuss the changes to the proposed water distribution system, the fire suppression, the water services to the building, and the project engineer was in agreement of the proposed changes and has subsequently submitted revised plans to CDI. Construction documents were submitted also on January 24, 2024, commencing review. The recommendation is to require Eagle's approval within six months from the city's planners' report and to the planning commission. Unbeknownst, however, was Eagle's timeline for review. Unfortunately, during that meeting, I wasn't here. When we made the motion, there was no way physically possible that they would have been able to get the information to Eagle with Eagle's 90-day approval. Eagle also, once they receive it, they have 30 days before they even respond. So if, as when we approved this back on August 21, even if they hadn't done any of the cleanup or they had all the cleanup ready and submitted, Eagle would not have been able to get the information back in time. However, and the good positive side is, is we really wanted the site cleaned. They have cleaned the site. They also did do sampling of the entire site. They also, there is technology where they can do a radar underneath and find out if there is any tanks. There is no tanks. The state does review all of this as well, so the state will make sure that site is 100% clean, and they have removed 1,100 tons of soil to make that site buildable. If, for whatever reason, Eagle feels that the site is still contaminated and is unable to be built upon, Eagle will notify them. But as of right now, the information is into Eagle, and the plan is being reviewed, and we are asking for a six-month extension for Eagle's report to be able to come back and verify the information from the environmental remediation companies.
And just to follow up to it, it does say four-story. In the past, it has said five-story, but there is no change in the plan.
There is no change.
There's no change. This is only an extension on what basically we're waiting on Eagle, so everything's
Eagle's review, yes. There is no change.
Questions? Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to approve a six-month extension to the time allowed for compliance with the conditions of the site plan approval for 24101 Jefferson to allow time for Eagle, however you want to say it, to complete its review of the closure report.
Support. Frederick. Supported by Mr. Vitale to approve the six-month extension. Other questions? Mr. Karen?
A little perplexed. You know, the city manager said, well, I wasn't here, so perhaps if he was, he would have brought up that that was never going to be possible to me, except that was what the planning commission had recommended. It was part of their documents that came to council because Liz and I, we actually talked about it a couple weeks ago, about where'd the language come from, in that, in terms of making sure that it was going to be handled correctly of, that it wasn't just going to be allowed to continue, and that extension really did have to come to council to get approved. So I guess, I don't understand that statement, because to me, I think, for anyone that's developed large projects and had experience, would have known that type of turnaround from Eagle wasn't going to happen, and that, but they agreed to it. I'm guessing they would agree to anything that was being said just to get the project.
So I voted against this before. Going to vote against it tonight. Ms. Rusi?
Well, one, same as John, I voted against a special land use, and I voted against a site plan before, so I'm going to carry over that vote tonight for the extension. But yeah, I shared John's confusion with how that was included in a site planner's staff report without knowing what the process or the timeline requirements are for Eagle's approval, making the planning commission's recommendation or council's approval contingent upon another unit of government acting in a timely fashion, especially when it involves the state, is kind of perplexing, because we can't guarantee that they're going to act in any sort of expedient fashion or not. I mean, it takes a lot of time. Look how long we've been waiting, for example, for the Kuyt Monroe grant to get finalized. So it just, it's a little bit confusing to me that was even included, just because we can't guarantee they're going to approve anything at six months or six years or anything like that. But I voted against a special land use, because I felt the building was too high and the, what the ordinance is and the master plan, et cetera, but we get the site plan, so I'll be voting against as well. But going forward, if we get motions and recommendations and clue contingencies upon other levels of government making approvals or taking action, I hope we're not in the situation again. Thank you.
Mr. Rubello?
Yep, I voted for this months ago, and I'm still for it. And if it takes an extension to make sure safety and all that is brought to the highlight, I don't care if it would take a year, okay? So we need this type of project in St. Clair Shores. I understand there's people that live on Ridgeway, and some aren't happy with it. But this is a nice option for housing for people in St. Clair Shores. I'm for it. Ground's not contaminated.
We have to
We're waiting for the results, the whole thing.
Waiting for the results.
So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, I don't really find it all that perplexing. I don't think that Planning Commission deals with the remediation of gas stations from 30 years ago all that often, and I think in their zealousness to make sure the developer didn't drag feet, they set a bit of an unrealistic timeline here for the state to act. And now we're aware that the state has 90 days to review and doesn't even address anything until 30 days, and of course, it takes time to get the soil out of there. So I don't think there's anything too perplexing here. I think there was just maybe in the interest of making sure that it happened, they were a little over zealous, and we're going to give them an extension, so.
Ms. Rusi?
Oh, the memo does state, though, that the recommendation didn't come from the planning commission members, it came from the staff report. So even if the planning commission of, you know, basically, commission member volunteers didn't know, I would hope our staff would before putting a requirement in like that again.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, seconded by Mr. Vitale, to approve the six-month extension to allow for compliance with the condition of the site plan approval at 24101 Jefferson to allow time for Eagle to complete his review of the closure report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four to two, it passes. Thank you. Item six, bids, contracts, purchase orders. Six A, request to increase project contingency, the pool pump house project DNS construction. Jason Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to request a contingency increase in the pool main drain project that you approved this winter. When I came before you, I explained that we ran into some cast iron piping that would be then covered up by all of the new concrete we'd be installing, and that the recommendation from our pool consultant was to replace the cast iron piping with a pool sidewall drain. So when we went to do that, we were concerned, as you expressed to council, one of the concerns we had was that by drilling through the side of the pool, since it is from 1966, that we could take a chance on collapsing the pool wall. I'm pleased to inform you that we were successful in coring through the pool wall with no damage to the pool. However, in order to reach that goal, we did disturb extra concrete conduits for the pool lights and the electrical bonding wire that surrounds the pool. So the increase in contingency tonight is to deal with those, with those issues. But again, we were successful in installing the pool sidewall drains without any damage to the actual pool proper itself. So I'm asking for a motion tonight to improve the contingency. As you remember, these were two separate contracts. This was an additional request to council this winter, recommended by Partners in Architecture in the amount of $44,509.46.
Do you think you'll need more after this, or, I mean, because you're getting close here, right? I mean, you've made a lot of progress.
Yes, Mr. Lint and I uploaded all of the contingency logs in the council packet to you. This will close out the pool main drain portion of this, and we still have substantial funds in the contingency dollars in the original contract to deal with any remaining issues. But we are now inside the building, and to date, we've had to make no changes to the building construction, so.
I mean, that's positive, right?
Yes, very positive.
Usually won't, a lot of times, we have this as underground, et cetera.
This is all
That's when we have the issues, we don't
Unforeseen underground issues is what we've run into, unstable soil,
Yep.
Old construction debris that was buried. So those are the things we've run into.
Mr. Vitale?
I noticed one of the items on here was the collapsed clay crock for the deck drainage. That's not being replaced, because that's under concrete, correct, most of it?
We're not replacing all of it, but the sections where we had to take up the concrete, we now have to replace it.
If we had a camera in to look at these other sections of clay, whenever I hear these clay flowerpots that are not very
Right.
Stable.
So I am going to have the sewer department come in and camera the rest of the drains, because we're in the middle of, as council asked for a master plan to be inducted by Partners in Architecture, we're in that stage of planning for the next, next steps that we need to take. And so we want to look at all those drains underneath all the rest of the pool deck that we won't be getting to now in this phase, but would need to be addressed down the line.
I know there are some liner products out there that actually do add some structural rigidity. Would this be a time to add a liner?
It could be, but what we're running into is because a lot, it was 1966, and a lot of these are, believe it or not, most of that pool deck, 90% of it is original concrete. So a lot of it has not been replaced over the years. You can tell because a lot of it's still colored from when they initially installed it in 66. So what we're finding is the clay, the clay drains or piping are buckling or collapsing. And so if we can camera them, and Mr. Babcock can recommend putting some kind of liner in them, yes, I'd be willing to come back to council and say, we might do that. But I also would say, wait until we do the master plan to see how many more sections of concrete will have to come up at the various stages of renovation that might be proposed in the, in the master plan.
Well, hopefully not too much, because if that concrete's still good from 1966, it'll probably be good in 2066.
Some of it is. Some of it's on its last leg. Yes.
Other question? Mr. Frederick?
Move to approve?
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen, to approve the request for the additional $44,509.46 in construction contingency for DNS pool main drain contract with a budget amendment. Pardon me?
Pictures, too. I've got some positive news here.
Let me just prove this, and then we'll show the pictures in. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero. Yep, shows the, great.
Okay. Good evening. In addition to the, the news for the extra contingency, I have a lot of positive news regarding the pool. The first thing, before we get to the pictures, I wanted to, to say is that administration worked with council to order the pool equipment, the filters and the boilers, in July, so that there would be no delay. I just want to reiterate to council that the filters arrived here locally at the warehouse of the installer on February 2. Had council and administration not worked to order those filters ahead of time, they would not have arrived for summer. So we, we did good work by ordering them ahead of time. And then one other positive note, for the first time in my 23 years of working at the pool, my assistant, who's sitting in the audience, Mr. Scholoski, has been working diligently and have, has filled all of our lifeguard staffing prior to March 1.
Great, well done.
So we're fully staffed.
And just, just to be even more, I mean, that's a real positive. It's very tough to get in lifeguard, so I mean, don't, don't just glide through. That's, that's, that's very good.
The gross points have reached out to us this year, asking if we could send any more, any applicants that now apply.
Yeah.
And we can't fill to them, so it's a good, it's a really good sign.
For sure.
So I was able to put together, I think with the help of Mrs. Pike today, some pictures for, I've been taking pictures all along throughout the entire project. So for those of you that have been to the pool, you can see that on the left-hand side of the screen, that is the pool deck picture of the old pump house and old surge tank. And on the right side of your screen, that was the picture of the pump house, the old pump house from the parking lot side. This is after they demoed. You can, you can see a bunch of concrete needed to be removed. In the next slide, you can see where they've excavated, if you look closely, it's hard to zoom in. If you look closely along that line right there at the edge of where they excavated, was where the old wall was, the cement concrete wall for the pool that surrounded the pool. They, they put the deck drain for that section underneath the wall. So when they took down the wall, it collapsed the, the deck drain. It was literally right underneath the footing of the wall. So that was one of the issues. This is when they were coring for the three sidewall drains in the, in the deep end, and you can see how much concrete they had to go through there, because they pulled one of the core sections out of. That's how they were really concerned, because of the curvature of the pool, that they might collapse the wall, but they were successful in penetrating the wall without collapse. The next one is showing the three sidewall drains completed. This next picture is where they dug on this side, on the outside of the pool wall, to get those drains in, and we had to take up all that extra concrete along the pool wall to get to that, and that's also where the electrical bonding wire is and underground conduit for the, the pool lights. The next slide shows the new sidewall suction lines being piped in underground to the, the pump house. On your left is the north side of the new pump house facing the parking lot, and on your right is the south side of the pump house on, from the parking lot. This is before they poured the floor late last week, but that is the north side of the pump house, and the cement area that you see are all underground tanks. So we, our surge tanks used to sit outside the pump house. This now is inside, and code required us, that's why the building is so large, code requires, required us to have larger surge tanks. So the water comes in from the pool and equalizes, the, the depth in your surge tank equals the depth in your pool, and, and there'll be an auto fill device that actually adds water as needed to the pool. And there's a second tank in there, which is remedying the violation we had from Eagle with the sanitary discharge. All the water, when we backwash, goes into the tank and then gets sent out to the, the sanitary sewer. The next picture is the north side of them pouring the, the cement floor last week. This is the new water main coming into the, the new water service coming into the building. And thanks to Steve from Communications, who, who's in the next room, came down today with the drone, so that you could get some good shots of the new roof that's been installed. And you can see down at the bottom where the excavator is, that's where they ran the sanitary sewer almost a year and a half ago, before we decided to progress with the new pump house. And today, they were working on making the connection from the pump house to the new sanitary sewer, sewer. And again, that's related to that violation from Eagle. Again, there's another picture that shows, on the left-hand side of the screen, there's a short alleyway between the homeowner's property and our property. They ran all the electrical conduits from the garage next to the water slide through that alleyway and over to the new pump house. And then that's just another aerial shot of the, of the site. I think that's the last one.
Fantastic.
I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Rubello?
Jason, I know the more you dig into these things from 1966, the more stuff obviously starts popping up. So, but I, I want to commend you, because you've always sent us some good stuff, out in front of the problems, letting us know what we can expect. So like I said, this pool's from 1966, and the stuff just busted down. So we're just sort of caught here in 2024 fixing it.
Yes.
So I think you do a wonderful job, and your communication is, at least in my eyes, is perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I didn't add that, I just wanted to let you know that the filters are actually being delivered tomorrow.
Great.
And the boilers are, the pool boilers are being delivered Friday or Monday.
And I think every time you're up here, I ask you, we are on schedule for Memorial Day opening?
Yes.
Okay. And we got good stuff, all the stuff here, we, we Okay, and we got good stuff, all the stuff here, we, we have parts that might break down in the future, we have.
Right, that was part of the budget, was a spare pump and motor, should we need it. But really, again, I want to compliment council with working with administration, had you not taken the action you did in July, we would not be able to open on time, so.
Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, echo Councilmember Bello's comments on the great job you guys are doing over there and just knowing what we need. My, my question was going to be about the three intakes. I'm just wondering, and I'm sure you're doing this, is there a safety feature that goes on that so we're not sucking in somebody's?
Yes, so basically, the old drain was at the bottom of the pool, and it was one.
Yeah.
But it had special grating on top of it to keep someone from getting, to comply with federal law and keep someone from getting stuck to it. And that's the reason why they divert that suction over three places, so that the suction is pulling from three different places, and it's not so intense where someone's going to get lodged against the grate. And also, we're moving, one of the positive things out of this whole project is, we're turning over that pool instead of every eight hours now, we're turning it over every, that, every inch of water in that pool is hitting the filters every four hours.
Wow.
So throughout our working day and throughout the usage of the pool, that water is being filtered when people are in it every four hours, which is fantastic for clarity and health of the water.
Excellent.
Best pool on the east side.
Thank you, and we will see you, Jason, on ten AM on the twenty-fifth of May.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Item B is request to approve the purchase of the water sewer department backhoe excavators. Babcock.
Good evening, Mayor and council. In the fall of twenty twenty-two, council had approved the purchase of two backhoe excavators that are used by the water and sewer departments. At that time, we had switched the make of the excavators to one that we felt is going to be more reliable and easier to get parts when we do need them down the road as it ages. We had asked for a comparable machine to what we had been using prior for the work that we do, and we took delivery of these new machines in December of twenty twenty-two, and then the second one in May of twenty twenty-three. And we found that the machines are working great for probably ninety percent of the work that we do, but unfortunately, when we do have the excavator extended all the way out and we're lifting heavy, like manhole castings, driveway sections, the machine will stop lifting, and it's just, it's, it's not safe for our employees. So what we've gone back to the manufacturer, and they are allowing us to turn back in these machines, less an hourly use rate for what we've already used them for, to upgrade to a stronger machine. So the request tonight is to approve the purchase of two larger, stronger backhoe excavators. The additional cost of the first one is forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two. The second one is twenty-six thousand, six hundred and nineteen. And the funds to cover this purchase would be pulled out of the water and sewer budgets, which there, and there is sufficient funds within the budgets for this purchase.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I guess first off, I just don't understand how this type of issue occurs. One, it says in the memo that they work for eighty percent of the work used, where it's twenty percent, you said ninety percent, ten percent, but the memo says eighty, twenty. But you can find the specs available with the loading capacities, including for all of the ranges of extension for the various components of it, right online. I found them when I Googled John Deere and then the two models. So I guess, and there are thousands of pounds difference between this model and the one we have. How do we get something that doesn't do, have the loading capacity we need for the type of work we do twenty percent of the time?
Yeah, in, in writing, it does, it does say that it should be capable of lifting the problems that we're having. But what we've done is we brought out the larger machine, and we've field tested it. We've been using it now for a few months on water main breaks and sewer manhole rebuilds and that, and the larger machine is proving to be able to do that.
Didn't we field test the two machines we did get, that those models, before we committed to a purchase of them?
Not for, we, we ran them to make sure our operators were happy with, you know, how they operated, but we didn't put them through all the different scenarios of those larger, deeper excavations.
Now, if it's not performing to how the specs say it should in terms of loading capacity when the arms are extended, shouldn't that be a warranty issue? I know there's a one-year warranty on it, and we didn't take delivery of the second one at least until May twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, we've, this is, we've met with the manufacturer, and this is what we've been able to come up with, with them.
I mean, because if it's not performing to what it's supposed to, and it can't do the job.
I will say, you know, like I said, we're trading in the old machine, we're paying a usage rate, the hourly usage rate is half of what is the state recommended usage rate, so we are getting somewhat of a good deal there.
And I was going to follow up, exactly what Brian was saying. I think the AIS Construction who sold us the equipment is realizing there was some screw-up on their behalf, telling us that the machines could do what they could do. In return, rather than saying, okay, hey, we're going to give you just trade-in value, they're not. They're actually giving us the full value of the equipment that we originally purchased minus a discounted usage rate. So it would almost be as if we had been leasing these for an hourly rate lower than actually what the state's hourly rate bid is, and then they're giving us the full value of the equipment back and then just selling us, with the my deal, the state value of what the new equipment is. So I think they, they have realized, and we have tried to talk to them and say, hey, this, you know, as Brian has stated, this isn't exactly what your specs say. Your specs say this should happen, and it's not happening. And the hard part is, is like Brian said, is majority of the work, it does work. It's just when those unique jobs, but those unique jobs are more, some of the most important jobs that they do out there.
Twenty percent isn't unique, it's twenty, one-fifth of the work being done.
Yep, so in return, like I said, they are giving us the full value of the equipment back, it's not a trade-in value, they're just giving, charging us for the hours that we utilize at a discounted rate even, from the state bid.
It just, we received one in December twenty twenty-two, then six months later, we received the second one, and we received the first one in December twenty twenty-two, and we used it, and we're like, this isn't doing what it needs to do, this isn't working one-fifth of the time for the jobs we do. We just took on another one in May twenty twenty-three, and said, okay, let's use this one, too. Oh, wait, this one's not working for one-fifth of the jobs as well. Let's put seven hundred and fourteen hours and a hundred and nineteen hours on these pieces of equipment, and then ask us in February twentieth to buy new ones, when even the quote we received from them for these new ones is from January nine, twenty twenty-four, which there are two council meetings in between receiving the quote and it being on the agenda. So I just don't understand some of the timing here. Why do we use it like a lot? Why do we take on a second one if the first one wasn't working, then why do we use them a lot without saying, hey, this isn't working, let's get some new ones and trade these, you know, and return these, basically? I'm just not understanding the timing here.
Well, we, we have been using them, and they, they've worked for the majority of the work that we do. So we've gotten use out of them, they've, they've worked well, just not for everything that we do. And it, it's taken some time to meet with the manufacturer. They actually have given us a machine to get us by, so we do have a larger one that we've been using. So that when we have to do these bigger, heavier excavations, it's, it's safe for our employees. So we, we have been using that larger machine, but it's, it's taken a while to, to really test the machine and then to ultimately, you know, meet with the manufacturer and come up with this, this purchase.
What's the loading capacity on this one? Now, I know it changes when, how the arms are extended and what extenders are put on, but.
I, I couldn't tell you right now.
Okay, but we know this one will work for the other fifth, the other twenty percent of the jobs.
And we field tested it, yep.
Okay.
And you mentioned about the council meetings and the delay. One of the main reasons is we don't want to field test them, and we didn't want to take, we took their word before, it didn't work. We want to see a show me. So they have been utilizing it for the last couple of months, so making sure that everything works for all jobs before we felt comfortable coming to council. And because they were being nice to allow us to use it, it has.
Oh, given the circumstance, I don't think nice is the word.
For sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Brian, in your initial description, you said you had asked for something comparable, and that's what the original John Deere model was recommended. Who were you asking?
The sales company that sells the machines.
AIS?
Yeah.
Okay.
AIS equipment.
Okay, and when they're, because I think one of the issues here is that when we're going off state bids, because they've already, you know, large equipment, they've already established pricing, and it meets our policy, but we tend not to really get that much into the specs. Because when we're putting something out for bid, right, we're writing our own specs, we're really getting into all the details. And so I'm afraid when we're doing some of these, kind of get caught on something like this, we're relying on what they're telling us. So was there anything, when they're providing any information, was there any comparison of the load carrying capacity?
There, there was, and like I said, I mean, still on their paperwork today, as far as I know, it still says that it can, can do, can lift a job.
Okay.
But it can't.
Okay.
So.
Compared to the previous equipment that we had?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Rabello?
I guess.
Microphone.
I'm not sure if this is an easy question or not with the transfer of the, of the hose and so forth. I'm sorry, I have a stuffed up right now. How much, is there a swing difference with the money from the new ones that you're looking for here and the old ones from twenty twenty-two? Are we out money? Are we even? Are we ahead of the game?
Well, we, well, we're paying because we use the machines, but in what we are paying them for that use, it's really only half of what, you know, the state allowable hourly rate is, so.
Okay.
In my, you know, opinion, this is, this is a good deal to get machines that are capable of doing what we need to do.
But how are we going to build these in the future? Are we going to rent them out like you've been doing with these ones we're using? Or is this a complete buy?
This is a complete buy. We usually have two front-lineback excavators that we use, and then we have two backups, and then we just cycle those, so.
Okay, so what we're doing right now, we're paying as we go at the fair price?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not.
We've already paid for everything before. We buy these.
Correct, these have been bought, we're redoing it, and in essence, what we're paying for here, is my understanding, we are paying really for the use of these since we purchased them. That, that's what, that's the money that you've indicated we are paying for, right?
Yeah.
Gotcha. From twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three until now, so we're paying it actually, the use of doing all these, you know, and I don't know, do you have any idea, fifty projects? Fifty, I mean, could we, could it be that many?
Could be, yeah. I mean, they're out every day. We use them every single day.
Right, so it's significant. Obviously, the hour, we see the hours, it's seven hundred and fourteen and, you know, one nineteen, so it's quite a bit they've been out here. That's in essence what we're paying for. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, and, you know, there will be the advantage, I suppose, of this being new equipment versus equipment that has hours on it. And I can understand, I can empathize a little bit with the issue. I mean, you're talking about equipment at the very edge of its specification, and we would probably get into a situation where we'd have to do some sort of scientific testing and then a false advertising lawsuit or something like that, which, I mean, it's not really realistic. And to get half the rate is probably a reasonable compromise. The, actually, while you're in front of us, I did want to bring up two other items. First of all, I think you guys took care of a bent street sign at Trombley. It wasn't even bent long enough for me to, like, start to notice it, and then you fixed it, so thanks for that. I am going to mention that in council comments, I think it's the second time it's been hit. I don't know if you can back that up or not, but. And then the other question I have is that we do have a, under consent agenda, a purchase order for stump grinding. Are we ever going to see the planer machine, or are we just not doing it anymore?
We, we haven't been able to get one out to demo, we don't have the machines capable to hook it onto, that we don't have hydraulic strong enough to run our own demo. So if, if we can get them out there, you know, out here still, to run a machine for us and, you know, show that it'll work for us, then it's something that we could consider.
I mean, with bringing this work back in-house financially, would that make sense?
Well, a big part of why we, we do it in-house is it helps prolong the life of these excavators. You know, we, when we have to do emergency tree removals for water main breaks or sewer repairs, the stump grind, the stump out of the way is better than having to use a backhoe to rip things out of the way. But we've been able to use some contractors to help us, you know, get by in these emergency situations.
How's that work in terms of timing and everything?
It's, it's gone okay. We're using local.
Just didn't run across from my house.
Yeah.
They were there the next day.
We're using local companies.
So we don't ever have an issue where we need a tree down, and we need to ground quickly because we need to get at a water main, and they're not able to come quickly?
Well, usually, if anything, we maybe would have to leave the water main break running overnight, and then they'll show up first thing in the morning on their way out to do another job, and they'll hit it for us. So it's, it's worked out okay.
Okay. Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So Brian, just a quick question on the, so this, this brings the warranty back to the beginning for these two new ones, correct?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah. I mean, the brand new machines.
Right.
Yeah.
So I didn't see the warranty info, maybe I missed it, but if you can just fire that off to us later.
Okay.
So I would move to approve the purchase of the two twenty twenty-two John Deere four-ten P backhoe excavators from AIS Construction over on Grand River in Lansing in the amount of seventy-three, nine ninety-one, and to approve a budget amendment to transfer forty-seven, three seventy-two from the water fund to the motor pool, and twenty-six, six nineteen from the sanitary sewer fund to the motor pool fund for this purchase. Support?
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to one.
Thank you.
Babcock, thank you. Six C, request to extend the contract for Galoue Construction for the local patching program. CDI Director Denise Pike, evening again.
Good evening again, Mayor, council. This item is before you because the contractor, Galoue Construction Incorporated, reached out to CDI and to the city manager, offering to hold his unit prices for another year with an option for a second year extension. When this was first approved by council, his initial contract was in two thousand nineteen. At the time, it was a three-year bid. Council approved it for one year with an option to continue for additional two. Council exercised that option in two thousand twenty-one. Galoue, at that time, offered again an extension at the current unit prices, and we accepted that. So he is reaching out again in two thousand twenty-three. The unit prices is the same as in two thousand twenty-one. It has not increased, we verified that through progress payment applications. So we are asking council's direction. We had begun to put together a bid package for this, knowing that the program was up at the end of last year. With receiving this offer, we'd be remiss to not present that to council for your guidance, and if you choose not to go in this direction, then we would put this contract back out to bid, the patching program. It's approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year is what we expend with Galoue Construction on local patching.
So it's zero increase for this fiscal year?
It is a zero increase for this calendar year.
Calendar year, twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Questions? Mr. Rabello?
Well, I'm just looking at this here, it's, he's holding his twenty nineteen prices.
His twenty twenty-one prices.
Oh, it's twenty, I'm sorry, it's twenty twenty-one prices.
Correct.
In this day and age right now, it seems like this stuff's shooting up five to ten percent a year.
It has been our experience that projects have come in over the engineer's estimate, largely because of concrete, yes.
Okay, this guy, he's familiar with the city, what's the job, and this is for going to be two years, one year with a one year to extend?
It is a one-year offer with an option for a second year.
Okay, so that option, I mean, is that, is that a sure thing? I mean, we.
If council so chose.
If we wanted to make this.
If council so chose.
If we wanted to make this two years, we could do that?
Yes.
And he'll make him hold his 2021 prices?
That is my understanding. That's what his letter says.
Okay, well, just, I, I, I would be interested in, in doing that. I think, I think that that is a, uh, a, a great benefit for, for us. Especially with what's going on with these pricing. Don't know where it'll end, don't know where it'll stop. And maybe when it stops, you know, we go back to how we were doing things before with, you know, bidding stuff out, but this is a crazy day and age right now for this matter. Some guy's offering 2021 to hold the, hold the deal? I, if there's any support, uh, to make it just a two-year extension, I would offer that up.
So I, I, are you making a motion?
Yeah, that would be a motion. I will, I'll read the whole thing out.
Okay, so Mr. Frederick, I mean, Mr. Rabello, your, your, your motion is the, uh, is the two-year, um, the, in the letter, specifically states for one year with an option of two years. Is that it?
Yeah.
Support that. Save him from having to read it.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Karen regarding that, so for the one year and two-year. Ms. Rusi.
By principle, I own vote for no bid contract extensions, and this is another no bid contract extension.
We are not going to do that, correct? If it passes. Anyone else? Motion made by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to one, it passes. Ms. Pike, thank you. Item seven is consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Support by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, we. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Vitale, you wanted to pull something out?
Yeah, G, just for discussion.
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the consent agenda except for 7G. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Vitale, 7G regarding the review. This is just the review, uh, Article 5 of the fence ordinance that will come eventually back in front of us.
Okay, so this will be, this is a review by planning?
It's staff, it's staff to do that. Sort of review it, and then it'll go through the proper procedures, and it will come out. It's just getting, uh, we'll, we'll say, lack of better terms, a head start and review it. And I know we, we did this actually with Mr. Karen and, uh, his, the animal one, so it's just, it's just putting it out there ahead of time.
I'll just then mention, I suppose, for the residents at home that are, they're curious. I mean, we have a fence arbitration committee. They hear a lot of cases that are for, you know, one to two inches or something like that, and often there's a good reason, having to clear an obstacle or drainage issues or something like that. So this would allow a little flexibility here without necessarily having to go in front of the arbitration, so.
Mr. Karen on that?
Yeah, just to kind of clarify for the future things like this, the recommended motion should probably should be received and filed. Rather than motion to review, so.
Okay.
So I make a motion to receive and file 7G.
To board. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Rabello to, uh, receive and file item 7G. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Item eight is updates and files from prior meetings. Mr. Lent.
Uh, Mr. Karen recommended establishing a policy that any large documents, like the TAMP resolution, be sent to council ahead of time for further review before asking for approval. In the process, in the future, any large documents, uh, staff is going to make sure that council gets adequate information ahead of time to be able to review, whether it's a receiving file in the previous council package should be the preferable way. But then also making sure we also email a copy to all council. Ms. Rusi asks for an electronic copy of the fire hydrant maintenance log. The DPW and fire departments can explore software and hardware requirements to upgrade the current system to become digital and make recommendations to city manager as a viability for cost and feasibility in the field. Per DPW Director Brian Babcock, uh, currently, we do not have an electronic copy of our fire hydrant maintenance log. Our water department employees take out to the field a three-ring binder with maps in various districts throughout the city with the fire hydrants within them. It is basically a checklist to track the maintenance that's done to all hydrants. We will be working with the fire department to make improvements to our maintenance logs. We will, at a minimum, be utilizing a spreadsheet. There is also a possibility of using an app that we are looking into. Mr. Rabello asked for the notes from the January 16th meeting Liz Coto conducted with the business landowners regarding the business communities. The real estate brokers and agents and developers, uh, the following summarizes the insights and discussion with the real estate brokers on January 16th. They shed light on manufactured challenges and opportunities influencing St. Clair Shore's real estate sector. Participants were invited by emails and sent to all residential and commercial brokerage firms and agents. The overall sentiment from the developers were positive as they expressed gratitude for the city's accessibility and responsive municipal services. And they put additional key insights are attached. Ms. Rusi asked for the follow-up on the estimated water bills. A resident called and was told appointments are being made for water main replacements, but they are now on hold. With our water main replacement, uh, software, unfortunately, we receive a lot of our, um, nodes.
Sorry, what? You said water main.
Oh, I'm sorry, not water main, sorry, the water meters. The MTU units were actually purchased out of Israel, um, so there is a large backlog on those meters. We currently had, as of last week, 46 scheduled appointments still made. We're down to approximately 50 MTU units remaining, um, so we're slowing those down, making sure that they're getting processed and put through. We did just receive, though, a shipment, um, was it last week? So we are going to be scheduling some more appointments. However, the large shipment that we're looking at, they're saying is now eight to 12 weeks out. So at our next work-study session, uh, we are going to be talking about our water meters and a way to kind of come up with some new ideas, and there are some new programs that are out there. So we're going to be talking about that at our next system and try to go to an American-made product, so we're not relying on delayed shipments.
There are still supply chain issues with anything nowadays.
There is, but it's not, unfortunately, it wouldn't be coming from Israel.
I appreciate the update.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Karen asked for an update on the water bill printing and wants to know the format. Per the city assessor, um, and council was emailed, our printing company is finally back up and running. Uh, the water bills that will be gone out in their normal format for the March 1st bills. Our bills usually get sent utilizing a data file, and the vendor imports our data into the invoice template that they have created. Typically, typically, a template change or creation takes, on average, 45 to 90 days to complete. In an emergency, we didn't have access to that, so we had to create an invoice utilizing our BSNA software. I had contacted them about the best way to accomplish this, and they helped us with details, but it's a basic report. Writing instrument and leaves much to be desired in graphic design. We then would print the bills as a PDF and forward that to the temporary printing company to be processed. So that's why the bills did look different for the last two billing cycles, uh, for those districts. However, as she stated on March 1st, we will be back to normal, um, and we will be moving forward. Mr. Karen asked for staff to follow up with Lake Shore School staff regarding the tree by the sledding hill. The superintendent sent this in response to the email from CDI Director. Good morning, Denise. Nothing has changed from the previous email indicating that we intend to leverage natural landscaping to divert traffic from the tree. We have not heard the incidental comments that you have indicated we shared. On the contrary, we have heard nothing but positive comments and have monitored the activity on the hill, noticing that the sled stopped short of that area. Thank you for your inquiry. Joe from later spoke with Mr. Diponeo, who said that the school is monitoring the situation and has received mostly positive comments about the hill. He followed up with an email that was sent to council with pictures.
Mr. Diponeo's the superintendent?
I don't know. Get an email with pictures?
I didn't get any.
I didn't get any.
Who got them?
Okay, so I will, I will double check the, his email once you guys, but, um. Uh, Ms. Rusi requested a policy for pending items and on follow-up in council. The process that we're looking at will be reading the comments like this, but then as a receive and file, it will have all the documentation along with an additional page that will have pending items that were not addressed, uh, as pending review. We'll stay on that list until they are addressed, and that will be on the council's receiving files for the future agenda items.
Great, just so we can keep up and keep track of things that are referred to a department, and we know that they are finally closed out at some point once a resolution is reached. Thank you.
And then we had one resident comment. Denise, a St. Clair Shore's resident, commented on the printing of the water bills. The text is too small and is fading, hard for seniors to read. The assessor indicated, as we had mentioned, the water bills were a little bit different. We did print the text in a larger than the regular notice, however, there could have been fading with the printing, um, that we were doing in-house compared to the normal printers. That is it.
Yeah, just three other, uh, follow-ups. Denise, uh, I noticed on, uh, I, I think it's Greater Mac, or it is Greater Mac, Gauckler in California, the building on the west side there, that we've had some, we'll call it plywood there, now has windows in there, so they are moving, the windows make it look, you know, much better, so it appears it's coming along well, finally, but can you give us an update?
Um, they are moving forward. They actually have been in court and meeting with the city attorney. So they are progressing on there. They've changed from a spa to salon suites, but they are progressing.
Okay, that's good. It looked much better. And then the old rallies, uh, rumor is it's Comet Burger. Have you, do we have that in there? Can that's on Harper in between nine and 10 mile there on the west, the west side?
We do have plans, uh, in, site plans in, and I believe they'll be coming to council at the next meeting.
Okay. And then I, I know that they're getting closer over at the old Kroger at nine mile, and, uh, we are working with the developer, and, uh, we don't, can't give you anything just, just yet. The original, uh, company there is still, I would say, on hold. The, the developer is working with them. But on the positive, there is a lot of interest. If it's not that, uh, the original company going in there, there is interest of, of other companies to go in there. So it's, it's very positive, uh, that, uh, we will have someone in there. I, I would say the original one seems to be holding it up a little bit, trying to make a decision or not, but, uh, the positive is that there is a lot of interest in that area, so, uh, hopefully we'll see something here, uh, in, in the future, as again, we, we are, uh, all including CDI, working with the developers, so. Those are, I think, three good, uh, positive updates as we go along here. Item nine is comments by individual council, and it's, it's the birthday person, I think. Are you 63, Mr. Rabello?
No, there it is. Had another year, spat it off.
Okay.
62.
Well, happy birthday, Mr. Rabello.
By the way, John Glenn orbited the Earth, first American, on February 20th, 1962.
Oh, okay. Oh, there you go.
John Glenn orbited the Earth, February 20th, 1962. I'll say it again.
There's an echo in here.
And I went for a week without having a name because they wanted to name me, my dad wanted to name me John Glenn Rabello. And that didn't fly, obviously. Got stuck with David. And also, I know, um, Councilman Frederick's mother, she's a Pisces brother, February 21st, that's tomorrow, and, uh, I'm only hoping to catch up with her someday, because I know she's getting close to 100.
How old is she?
She'll be 99 tomorrow.
99 tomorrow, okay.
And Dave, thanks for calling her today, appreciate that.
No problem. I told her her chances of getting to 99 are a lot better than mine. Anyways, uh, talking about progression and so forth, uh, at nine mile in Jefferson, what is that, a, a vein place coming in, uh, where the old, uh, oh, that was a field for 25 years, probably.
Surgical, uh, veins, vascular.
I thought you said vape.
I thought you said vape, too.
I did, too, I did, too, but.
It's a van place, like custom vans.
It's vascular surgery, I believe.
Probably.
Yes.
Cleaned me right up here in my nose section. Vape, vape. But a lot of cool stuff. I mean, they breaking ground, they're moving at the old, uh, Gourmet House property with the docks, uh, restaurant there, that's moving. The DDA stuff's moving, maybe we could get a report, uh, coming up, and hopefully that Grobel Little Mac and Stevens, that looks, uh, boy, I thought it would be a long time before someone jumped into that, but I'm sort of excited to see that.
Absolutely.
I have, I have some questions here, but I want to, I'm going to knock it off for a second here, because I'm just a little stuffed up, but, um, at this time of the year, uh, I usually make some type of, uh, uh, just bring it to attention. Adoption is an option. I've had a wonderful experience. I've had, I got two boys that aren't sort of in town. My daughter is with me, and, uh, she's given me two unbelievable days of my birthday week. So thank you, Sasha, but I know you're not, I know you're not listening, but if you are, if you are, be surprised.
Hopefully, she's baking you a cake right now.
Saint Germain's, obviously, uh, there's a, a story in the St. Clair Shore Sentinel on Saint Germain's. For those folks in there, uh, that are, are going to school, I mean, keep up the fight. Uh, I got, I know you got a little window, but who knows? Miracles do happen. So, uh, for the Saint Germain people, good luck. And this might be close to two weeks ago now, we went to the, uh, Miss St. Clair Shore's, uh, pageant, and it was Lila O'Connor.
Isla.
Isla O'Connor. So I would go in and pull my Muskrat tail out, but, or my Muskrat, uh, award out for, but I don't want that girl to surround. It has not been washed, so. Let's keep, let's keep moving forward. Let's keep moving forward.
That's a stuffed animal.
The last thing I wanted, this, okay, that's a stuffed animal.
In case people just don't watch and wonder what you're talking about.
The Muskrat is the official, uh, he's the official mascot of St. Clair Shore's. And, uh, that's it. I'll cut it short.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Um, the water tape maintenance contract extension request, are there, there are some pending questions, are there any updates, and when can we see that back?
I, I'm so sorry, can you repeat that?
The water tank maintenance contract extension request.
Ten-mile tank. Oh, so yes, we are reaching out.
The big tank.
Yeah, we've been working with them with the contract extension, um, and making sure that we get everything, so it's, when we come back, council is.
Okay, and I know I received an update on the TAM plan that we had discussed last meeting. The state said it's okay, we could wait till October, so we can, we won't be seeing that again until closer in the fall, and hopefully, I know, um, the administration is going to take it in-house and do it, so I know it will be a lot improved when it comes back to us, so.
And it may be in the summertime, it might be, it might be in July.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't have to be turned until October, so before, earlier would be better, but it's not anything we have to, like, rush and fix to get in and then do it again in October. And then a couple of follow-up issues with Dust, and I'll just get with you behind the scenes, and, um, happy birthday tomorrow to Mrs. Frederick, and happy birthday, Dave. I'm sorry you're not feeling good on your birthday. Hopefully, they're baking you chicken noodle soup along with your birthday cake, so feel better.
You might need it over there.
Yeah, that's, help me get some, like, the COVID let's see glass. Put it back, that would be nice, like a bank teller or something.
It's too late.
It's allergies.
Too late.
Okay, well, happy birthday, Dave. Hope you feel better. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. And happy birthday, Councilman. So, I know, it's a good thing your, you know, your age does come up, because it does remind me how old my oldest brother's going to be, so. He's a few months behind you there, so.
He's a few months behind there, so. And also, happy early birthday to Mrs. Frederick. I know she watches every meeting, so congratulations on number 99. It's incredible. So just a couple of things. First, Thursday, the county had a screening of the hidden history of Lake St. Clair, which was a project put, basically coordinated by the Macomb County Planning Department to talk a little bit about the history of the town of Belvedere and St. Felicity's Church, both of which ended up being submerged as they dug out the South Channel. Yeah. To basically allow for more shipping to go through the lake. Once it cleared out the flats area for St. Clair flats, it allowed more water flowing in the Lake St. Clair and basically flooded out both those areas and buried them under the lake there. So it's a very nice 25-minute or so film. It actually, it goes into probably more of just what Lake St. Clair is and all the fishing recreation that's available. It is a little light on the history to my taste, but that is available. You can watch it online at macombgov, or macombgov.org, which is the Macomb County website. They do have the full film up there, so anyone can go ahead and check that out. And the only action for today is more for, for finance. Renee, if you could follow up, I know I've heard from both of, from beautification and historical commission, they're waiting on kind of the monthly expense, expenditure reports they normally get from committees. I know we've gone through accounting, you know, the accountant changes within finance, but if we can get a timeline on when those reports are going to be available, the committees are looking for them, so they kind of know what they can plan on for the rest of the fiscal year. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. First off, I wanted to just remind everybody that the second annual night at the races is coming up, March 8th. It's going to be 7:00 PM, and it'll be at Blossom Heath. And if you want to, and I understand there's not very many tickets left, so if you want to go, and it was a great time last year, we all had, we all had a ton of fun. If you want to go, I, I would get in contact with the, the fire union, the St. Clair Shores Firefighter Union Local 1744. So SCS, F-F-U-L-O-C-A-L-1744@gmail.com, or you can go to their, their Facebook page, and there's actually a QR code that you can, you can log into. And that's going to be coming up March 8th, and it looks, looks to be a blast. I had one question, since we're talking about buildings and all that stuff, what is the latest with St. Mary's? Do we know?
I don't, I don't think there is anything. There, it sits as it is, and there's nothing to report.
Okay. And I see the chief back there. I'm hoping that we're keeping an eye on that because I've been getting calls from neighbors or they're still saying there's people over there, and it's probably kids or something screwing around the back. But if anything comes in for that, Denise, I'd love to, love to hear that right away. All right, so let's, well, one more thing. Let me just say, congratulations to Brian Sears, who is a new fire, fire department employee, a new firefighter who was sworn in. Way to go, Abby. Sworn in this past week, and I believe we stole him from Memphis, Tennessee, which I think is really awesome that he came all the way up here and.
Very awesome.
A lot, a lot of experience. So he's going to be the newbie, and they're, they're going to give him all that little bit of quasi-hazing, and he's probably going to know more than some of the other people who came in just ahead of him. So way to go, Brian Sears. Welcome aboard. And Dave, again, happy birthday to you, Mom. We'll see you tomorrow. We're going to do some dinner. And happy birthday, 99. All right, so I know Linda mentioned last time, when she was here last meeting, about the fish fries. And I think I ran into the mayor at St. Isaac's this past Friday. And of course, St. Margaret's is doing it. St. Margaret's of Scotland, the Bruce Post. And last but not least is Saint Germain, Our Lady of Hope. And I know that we all got some emails from those folks that they're trying to save the school. So if you, if you feel like you want to go get a fish fry, kind of go maybe over to Saint Germain's this week, or next week, or the week after, all the way to Good Friday because the men's club over there is trying to make some money to keep the school open in addition to, you know, the normal stuff that they do. So we really appreciate those guys. I know they had a big meeting. They're trying to raise, I don't know, $300,000. And I think they, they have to get at least to 150, so. Having said all that, let's just talk a little bit about the library really quick. Oh, before I do that, Abby, drop boxes. I know we have drop boxes. There's six of them all over the city, or at least two here, and there are four. Can you tell us where they're at?
Yeah, so we have six drop, election drop boxes. We have two here at City Hall. One's at the golf course, one's at Veterans Memorial Park by the parking lot. And then we have one at Blossom Heath and one at the Civic Center. And they're open 24/7 and close at 8:00 PM on Election Day.
So you can put your absentee ballot in those boxes?
Yes, along with applications and registrations.
And what would be the latest that you could take an application in one of those boxes?
We, they're open 24/7, but they are closed at 8:00 PM on Election Day, and then they open back up around 40 days before the next election in August.
So if you were, if you were going to apply for an absentee ballot, you wouldn't really want to put it in those boxes?
You could. They're checked daily. We check them every day prior to the election, but they are locked in that lull time between elections.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to recommend that they bring it here would be the best and quickest way, right? So, okay. But we do have those drop boxes for applications as well as the actual ballot when you get it. And you have to mark whether you, what ballot you want in that application, right? Whether it's independent, or whether it's Democrat, Republican, or nonpartisan, which we just have.
Yeah, the proposal only, and that's only for our Lakeshore School District residents right now.
Okay. All right, let's talk about the library real quick. Abby, thank you for that. So the library is going to be offering a new service starting in March through Mango Languages, the American Sign Language courses. Get started by downloading the free Mango app. Somehow I think my wife will be all over that since she's taught all the grandkids sign language. All right, storytime registrations begin February 26th at 9:00 AM. The session will run from March 5th through April 4th. Space is limited. Registration is available through the online calendar. Registration can also be done in person by phone at 586-771-9020, or by email to scs youth at libcoop.net. By the way, somebody asked me what Libcoop is. It's Library Co-op, which is the, what we are part of in Southeast Michigan. Teens ages 12 to 18 join delightful donuts for a donut decorating class at the library on Saturday, March 2nd. That sounds delicious. Each teen will receive donuts to decorate and take home. Registration is required and began today. Registration is available online through the library's website and all the other spots that I just mentioned. Children ages 12, 1 to 3, and their caregivers are invited to toddler drop-in play at the library on March 2nd. From 10:00 to 11:30 AM, toys will be available in the Guild Store Meeting Room. No registration required. And then Take and Make Bags for children ages 2 and up are available starting Monday, March 4th. Bags contain supplies to create a yarn owl that will be placed in a bin inside the Youth Services Room and are available during library hours while supplies last. And on February 15, February 15th, the library welcomed 156 people to our Meet Marshall from Paw Patrol event. It was a possum experience. So, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
Yes. Happy birthday, Dave. Happy birthday, Mrs. Frederick. Keep the Vitale coming.
Yes.
While Denise is getting set up over there with the PowerPoint, I did have a resident chief who asked about police policy at school events to, that we should have officers wearing body cameras at the school events. I, I kind of see reasons for and against. You know, resource officers, I think part of their job is to be approachable. Students may not feel that way, but then again, maybe there's a reason I'm wrong on that, too. I don't know. It was raised to me by a resident, so I'm raising it to you. Maybe if you could get back with us on reasons pro or con on that. Let's see. Okay, so I had this in there. I already thanked Mr. Babcock for his DPW, taking care of that quickly. However, the resident who made me aware of it also did say that northbound Harper cars turning onto Trombley end up getting pinched, sometimes surprised by either a car or a car parked there. Sounds like there may be an issue with people parking too close to the intersection there. The resident said that's the second time that that sign has been hit. I can't testify one way or the other, but kind of what I got from our conversation back and forth was, you know, he suggested no parking east of the, excuse me, west of the driveway, further back, but I would think that the standard 30 feet from the intersection would suffice. Maybe you could, you know, have officers take an extra look and see if someone's parking improperly there. Seems like a resident noticed it. But while I was there, if you can go to the next one. I gave me a time to really have a nice close-up look at the Trombley Harper Building Fire, which I think was Christmas 2022 approximately. Yeah, it was last winter, not last winter, but the winter before. Anyways, so we've got a sidewalk closed down there, and we've got people, you can kind of see the path, walking around on the easement or maybe the ice to get around that. Can you go to the next slide? But maybe that's for good reason because we've got all this masonry supported there. That's where we've, that's closed off down low. You know what? That doesn't look safe to me. And I asked about this before. I asked, are we, have we begun a court case on this?
This is the fire that is between, right by vans? Is that?
No.
No.
It's an old appliance store.
Hurst Appliance.
So we do have a court case on Hurst Appliance. They were the ones that are required to have a structural engineer because they started to repair the roof, and we said we need some documentation by a professional that this is safe. And I believe that Councilman Rabello and I also heard that their insurance money, they were still waiting for their insurance money, or it had just come in.
Well, as you can see, that door's been replaced for a while. It's a new frame and everything there. And here's the thing, so if the, if they say the building costs $200,000 to rebuild, and it's only insured for $100,000, you know what you can do with the first $100,000? You can get a roof done. You can close up the structure. You can get rid of the masonry. The most expensive part of construction is going to be the plumbing, the wiring, and everything that goes inside the building, which is of no relevance or importance to me. What I'm concerned with is, we've had this situation for two years now, and I don't like sidewalks being closed because we don't want people walking under masonry that may or may not be safe. So if we need to somehow expedite this and give this the seriousness that I, I feel it deserves, then let's do that and let's have updates on it. Next slide, please. Now, this is the one that's closer to vans. So there may be a plan to rebuild this, but if it's like every other fire damage building in terms of getting rebuilt, and it's going to sit there for two years like this, it should get painted at the very least. I could solve this problem by going to Habitat for Humanity, buying two 45, five gallon, $45 five-gallon buckets of paint, rent a sprayer, and just spray the whole thing gray so it doesn't look like this. And if it's going to, unless there's a building plan submitted or something here, then, then let's get them doing that because I don't think we should go another summer looking at a burned-out building. Next one, please. While I was over there, I parked in the auto parts store that shall remain nameless. There are two junk vehicles over there. One has two flat tires. One looks like our officer may have already put an abandoned vehicle tag on that. It's dated 216, and it looks like somebody just scraped it off. Probably should get some follow-up on that. You know, that's a, that's a drag link that fell off the front suspension, so I don't think that Jeep's going anywhere anytime soon. You'd think if the store manager over there doesn't want to remedy that, then I suggest we just call AutoZone Corporate.
Mr. Vitale, chief, can you assist with that? Well, there you go. Thank you.
Looks like we may have already seen it, and then the remedy was just to scrape it off a little bit, and now it continues. You know, I actually ran into a resident when I was over there looking at it, and he thanked me for looking at it. He said, you know, a few months ago, there was a guy living in a vehicle over there. So I, I don't know what's going on. You don't expect this kind of stuff from a corporate store, but. So. Yeah, we'll, we'll change gears here a little bit. Pardon the pun. Can we go to the next one? So on a, on a more positive note, Saint Germain School is going to have a number of events coming up. They're going to do an open house tomorrow, 6 to 8. They will have on Friday a hair-a-thon at the school. I think that is haircuts done with proceeds going back to the school. And maybe somebody can reach out to me and tell me if you can do a fade because I'm, I'm in need. I'd be surprised if you could get a good fade there, but. Then they're going to have another open house again on Saturday. On Monday, Modern Cone will donate 30% of their proceeds to Saint Germain. Sircare is donating 20% of purchases. You need to mention the code 22124 over there. And just, of course, they're also having their normal fish fry on Friday. Sounds like there's an opportunity for maybe company sponsors and things like that donations. If we could go to the next slide. And that's just the, for their open house. Tomorrow and Saturday, I did say I'd go ahead. We certainly support them and want them to be able to stay open. I'm always very proud of the fact of all the other educational opportunities we have here in the city, be it the three Catholic schools, be it some of the homeschooling opportunities and things like that. We do have alternatives here in this city, viable alternatives, and I'm always happy to see that. So that, I guess, is what I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 10, the city manager's report. Do you have anything?
Yep, so I was going to inform council about the TAM grant and having it to October, so thank you, Candace. And then the final thing is, we did finish up our seven Zoom interviews for the assistant city manager. We narrowed it down to three. Unfortunately, one of those individuals, right before coming to interview for assignment, took a city manager position. So he has, took himself out of the running. We had one interview last week, and we have the other interview this week. I know we feel we do have two very qualified candidates. That's it.
Thank you. Item 11, it's audience participation, five-minute time limit, views and opinions expressed under audience participation of those individual citizens only. Don't necessarily run the mayor, the city administration, or the administration of the city of St. Clair Shores. Anyone here that would like to speak? As I said, all that. No, seeing none. We'll go back to Mayor's comments, just two brief ones. Last week, I had the chance to get over to the library and talk to Stephanie Fair, who has taken over for Rosemary Orlando, who did an outstanding job for the library. And just excited to see what Stephanie's going to do. The library is a great, a great place in the city. You know, she indicated that 14,000 books are checked out on a monthly, monthly, and I guess I, I thought that was, you know, I guess I was actually, and I, I love the library. I go to the library, and I was like, wow, that, that. That's a lot of, that's a lot of books that are, that are checked out. So again, I think sometimes you think maybe the library's not as used as often, but it is, it is used. It's got a lot of activity, a lot of good ideas coming, you know? I think you get a little fresh eyes there. So excited for Stephanie and excited that the St. Clair Shores Library is a great facility in the city of St. Clair Shores. And so we are, we're proud to have that here. And then second is, a couple of weeks ago, we had the golf course individuals here in Parks and Rec, actually Rob, Matt, and I think Jeff was here, too. And I'm just trying to reiterate, kick the ball, get the ball rolling again, the first tee renovation. Again, St. Clair Shores Country Club, you know, was designed in '73, opened in '75, so it's not the 50th year. Next year will be the 50th year of the St. Clair Shores Country Club. And they want to do the first tee renovation. If you watch golf quite a bit, you, you have always a great-looking first tee, and many times with clock, that's what they're going to do here. You see the rendering up there with the clock, new landscaping. It was old and tired after 50 years. They're going to put in a, a new wall. The way they're funding that is memorial bricks. You see that around the clock. Of course, bricks will not be driven out of that. They'll maybe be walked on, but nothing else. So they will, they will be there a long time. So we're asking that, that's the funding mechanism. We need individuals to buy bricks. We're still, I think, under 100. We're hoping to get somewhere in that 100 or 200 before we kick, kick that off and, and have the bricks made. So there's four options, 100, 125, 250, 275. You know, there's, there's a lot of people that have played golf here in St. Clair Shores. We average more than 50,000 rounds on that golf course. So you know there's been a lot of people, meaning a million round, more than a million rounds on that golf course over the, over the fif, almost 50 years. So great place to memorialize mom or dad, or brother, sister, grandfather, grandma, whomever out, out there. And you can, I think this is all online. whomever out, out there. And you can, I think this is all online, but you also can call, if you need assistance, you can call the golf course at 586-294-2000, extension two, 294-2000, extension two, and put a memorial there at the golf course. Another great facility here in St. Clair Shores, and they do a great job maintaining that. So hopefully, we can get that going once we get enough bricks sold. So I'll probably bring this up in the next couple of meetings. Hopefully, we can get it going. And with that, we will just need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Rusi. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All opposed. Six to zero. Good night.